Well, good afternoon and welcome to what I think is the sixth consecutive, although I may be off one or two there, town hall meeting sponsored by the Weather Coalition at the AMS Annual Meeting. I want to thank you for being here. As the old Delta line says, we never forget that you had a choice. And there's a lot of town halls going on now, so we really do appreciate you carving out the time in your schedule to be here. On behalf of my fellow co-chairs, Jon Snow and Pam Emch, we're excited about this town hall meeting, and we think it's going to continue to provide us with an opportunity to have conversation and engagement on the concept of a U.S. Weather Commission. I do before, I continue, want to pay special thanks to the American Meteorological Society staff for making sure we have this room and the accommodations of a video recording. So, thanks to the staff. And also, a thanks to EUCAR for providing the lunches that I hope you all are enjoying today. So, briefly, what is the Weather Coalition? Because, you know, there are some folks, I'm sure, who are in attendance that may not be absolutely familiar with who we are and what we do. And in a sense, our mission is to bring together within the weather and climate enterprise representatives of America's weather industry, our research and education community, scientific organizations, to effectively advocate for our weather and climate enterprise. And we pay particular focus to research and development collaborations, observations, environmental observations, and certainly infrastructure with particular emphasis on high-performance computing. So, that's what the Weather Coalition is. If you're interested in finding out more, weathercoalition.org is the website, or you can see any of the folks that are involved, myself, Pam or Jon, or Mike Henry from EUCAR. There are some folks. And if you're interested in joining, there are absolutely directions on how to do that on the website. So, we'd really appreciate any interest that you may have. So, the purpose of today, as I said, is to continue the conversation on this concept of a weather commission. And a lot of the questions that I get are, "Well, you know, Ray, what is a weather commission?" And I think we have some handouts that really go into depth in describing it, but I'm going to try to characterize, you know, a little bit more from my own perspective. And that is, is that I think we all realize that in the reality of the 21st century economy, our national deficit at $16 trillion, we are in a dynamic now that we have not, as a community, faced before. And to just simply go on and think that the processes and the procedures and the customs that we have had over the course of the past five decades or more that have sustained this enterprise and have helped it grow are going to continue, I think many of us don't believe in that. And we think, quite frankly, that's just really not reflective of reality. And we're going to have to find a way that, in this demanding time for enhanced challenges to environmental observation and prediction, this community is going to be called on to provide even more strategically critical information to our national and global well-being, our security, and our economy. So, how do we do that if the budgets are shrinking? Well, the answer may be in leveraging the entire enterprise, how we're organized and who does what. So, if we were to start with a blank sheet of paper today, zero base, and we brought groups together to say, "Okay, there is no history, there is no legacy," how would we today, if we knew of all the assets we had in our entire enterprise, all the way from the far left through basic fundamental R&amp;D, all the way through to products and services to end-users? How would we organize it? How would we make sure that we are providing this nation with the utmost value for its investment? I think the answer to that is going to be something not, it's going to be different. It's not going to be like what we have today. So, when we think about a weather commission, the idea would be to bring together for a period of time, a group of folks that would really focus and have the ability to free-think and say, "Okay, if we zero-based this thing, how would we do it today? What would change? How would we organize it? How would we manage it? How would we really enhance the value?" So, that's how I like to think of this concept. But we're going to talk more about that, and I hope that during the course of today's town hall meeting, that's going to become a lot more clear. I say we're going to continue the conversation today, because the conversation actually started back in last summer at the AMS Summer Community Meeting in Norman, Oklahoma. That conversation continued in a public briefing in Washington in September. We had a teleconference just about a month ago in December on this topic. We're having the panel discussion today. And then, our next step is going to be a meeting that's going to be held in March in Dallas, where we're going to bring together some folks to see if we can actually create the first straw-man draft of what a charter for this weather commission may look like. So, there's a process that's going to continue to unfold. No train has left any station yet. And in parallel to these more formal phases along the way, we're also going to maintain the Weather Coalition website as an input into thoughts, ideas, concerns, whatever, on the Weather Coalition website. So, I urge each and every one of you to visit the site, and if you have thoughts, if you have opinions, if you have ideas, please take the time to put them down. Even if they're just one-sentence bullets, even if they're text messages, that's okay. We want to get as much input into the concept as we possibly can. So, today, as I said, we're going to do a town hall meeting, a panel format, excuse me. We're going to have four panelists provide some insight into their thoughts on the concept, and then we're going to have a general discussion for questions and comments from everybody that is here today. So, Jon Snow, my fellow co-chair, is going to conduct the panel. When the panel is concluded, Pam Emch is going to provide a few closing remarks. So, I think I've run out of my time, so I think that, for those of you in the audience who remember that gentleman named Ed McMahon, he had that famous line, "Here's Johnny." Thank you.
You really didn't have to do that, Ray. I'm Jon Snow. I'm a faculty member at the University of Oklahoma. And again, I also welcome you to this town hall sponsored by the Weather Coalition. We're very pleased to offer you a panel of four individuals, very distinguished individuals, very accomplished individuals in our community, who will offer a diversity of opinions about the notion of a weather commission and what it might or might not accomplish. I want to remind folks that there is TV and audio recording taking place, so when it comes to answering or making comments or asking questions, you will be recorded for posterity. Your grandchildren may find it of interest. Secondly, questions and comments we'll have at the end. We're trying to arrange this to have plenty of time for questions and comments. However, we do ask that people line up and use the microphone that's just here towards the front of the room, so that we can get a good copy and also, everybody in the room can hear. So, as we close the presentation parts here in a minute, we will ask people to come forward with questions and comments. Our four speakers will have five minutes each to make whatever remarks they so desire regarding the notion of a weather commission, and then we will open for comments. Our first presenter is Barry Lee Myers. Many of you know is the CEO of AccuWeather Incorporated in State College, Pennsylvania. I'm not going to do elaborate introductions here because of the interest of time and also the fact that most of the people on the panel are very well-known. So, with that, Barry?
What probably many of you don't know is that I spent years on the faculty at Penn State and used to standing up when I speak, so that's why I came over here. No insult to the Barian who told me he has the flu and he didn't even want to shake my hand. We're here today to talk about an idea that originated, really, as Ray described, with EUCAR and leaders of the Weather Coalition, and it seemed that, an idea that, at least when it started, was somewhat research-community centric. It seemed to many who first heard about it to be a solution in search of a problem. I'm here with an open mind, but hopefully with some compelling questions. I don't expect that we can answer those questions today, but that we can start thinking about what they are. My first question would be certainly, in a business environment, what is the strategic objective that the community is trying to achieve? And then, secondly, what method or vehicle is best to achieve that? I know some people have suggested to me that the idea was sparked by something I said not too long ago, that an era of fiscal challenges we're in now, if we, as a community, do not come together and talk about where resources should be allocated and where they need to go, others will. I did say that, and I believe it. A weather commission appointed by others, perhaps such as Congress and the President, at any time, but especially in a time of political discord that seems to be part of the nation's body politic at this point, concerns me. Many in this room have worked for years, if not decades, to achieve a successful cooperative environment. So, the question has to be asked, is the surrendering of advocacy for the weather community to yet another group, who may have less understanding about what is needed than the groups that we now work together with and to influence, is that a good idea? Some have said that a weather commission would draw attention to the needs of the community. Perhaps that's correct. But what would the commission be charged with and by whom? The originators of the idea focused more, as I mentioned, on academic and research views, and that's one emphasis. I can tell you the weather industry sees another. The commission might see a third. Much progress has been made. Do we want to advocate for a situation that we can't control? Advocates have said that a primary goal would be to do no harm, and I agree with that goal. But I see no path that can ensure that outcome. And a process that could cost millions and last for years misses the urgency of now. The budget and legislative process may be messy. It has rendered, perhaps, less so and more productive through the appointment of a commission, but I don't know. Would things like the NSEP computers that AccuWeather and others pushed for Congress to fund have been aided by a weather commission? Would the budget anomaly and the continuing resolution for the satellite program a few months ago been aided by a weather commission? I have no way of knowing. What I do know from my 30-plus years of walking the halls of Congress and working with the White House, is that working on getting much relevant legislation and policies that underpin the freedom of weather data today and many other weather-related policies that we currently take for granted was a significant effort. In fact, many of us may not recognize or understand what some of them are even today, although if you look at the partnership policy that NOAA issued a few years ago, they run through a recitation of things like the Paperwork Reduction Act, which seems like it's not even related to us, but in fact, has to do with the freedom of data in real time that we all need. It is something that, in fact, I worked on and helped with in the early 1980s. Advocates of a weather commission have boldly asserted what the weather commission will do, but as Tom Bogdan, one of the people who's advocating it, and others have correctly pointed out, we really can't control that. I think we all want to understand the issues the initiators feel need to be addressed and how a weather commission would support the weather enterprise as a whole. And while a congressionally-chartered weather commission may be an approach, there is no certainty regarding the commission's charge, timing, makeup, or outcomes. This makes it difficult at this time or any time to judge its merit. The American weather industry always supports initiatives whose strategic purpose fits within five primary tenets. And let me end by quickly summarizing what they are. One, to empower and facilitate the American weather enterprise to achieve its full potential. Two, to define the value chain of all parts of the American weather enterprise, to ensure the American public is served with the best possible information, employing the most cost-efficient combination of public and private institutions. Three, to place special focus on NOAA National Weather Service role as a builder of the nation's core weather infrastructure, public warnings for events that pose imminent threat to life and property, and working with America's weather industry to achieve worldwide leadership in weather and weather media. Four, to focus federal support to ensure legislative and budgetary agenda which makes maximum and optimal use of all parts, public and private, of the American weather enterprise. And five, to encourage the execution of the aligned missions and roles through public and private partnerships. Those are goals the American weather industry has advanced and supported for decades. They are beneficial to the entire weather enterprise and the nation. They are worthy strategic objectives. The big question is, where does a weather commission idea fit with these strategic objectives, and how does it advance the ball relative to them and the weather enterprise as a whole? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Barry. We'll now hear from Dr. Barian Moore, Director of the National Weather Center and Vice President for Weather and Climate Programs at the University of Oklahoma.
Thank you, Jon and Barry. I certainly appreciated your remarks. I'd like to begin by thanking Tom Bogdan and Scott Rader and others. I've spent a lot of time talking with Tom about this, and he knows that I have very real concerns. And so, I think it is a clear expression of the desire to have an objective discussion when they invite someone who has expressed severe concerns about this to be on the panel. So, I think that really is the way we ought to be doing things in many arenas. I compliment AMS and EUCAR all that. As Ray was beginning his introduction, I felt that he actually was touching on a few ideas that I had, but maybe from a different point of view. And he spoke about, "Do we believe that the procedures and the customs of the last five decades are going to get us where we need to go?" And I think Ray was expressing concern with that. And I guess when I looked at the weather commission, it reminded me of the procedures and the customs of the last five decades. And therefore, I asked the question, "Is that going to get us where we want to go?" The Oceans Commission really was a very large and cumbersome object, and it took up a lot of time. And if you said, "What was their number-one objective?" Not that they didn't do some good things, it didn't come out of it, but their number-one objective was law of the sea. And we didn't make any progress on that, and yet, we tied up the political process for quite some time. So, my biggest concern is, is this the right idea at this time and at this place? And I'm worried that it's not. Second, a blank sheet of paper. Would this be the system that we would design? Well, I would be very, very reluctant to go into this world that we have right now with a blank sheet of paper, because we might come out with a blank sheet of paper. And we would then not have, I mean, the system that, well, let me just simply also agree, though, with Ray, do we need to do something? Yes. I think we need to do something. It may well be that the weather commission will evolve into what I think we need to do, but from my perspective, gaining an urgent initiative built around the theme of a weather-ready nation, and I mean by that, a nation that is ready for all weather, be it droughts or sandies or tornadoes, an infrastructure that has the observations that are needed, grounded satellite, that has the computing capacity to assimilate those observations into forecast, and then, most importantly, an infrastructure of communication, be it federal, private, university. Do we, are we where we need to be in the observations, computing, communication space? And the answer is, no, we are not. So, if it is a weather commission that can be tuned to be very responsive, that can turn out a product within a year, I might be interested. The other concern I have is to turn it over to the political process right now and ask for the political process when we can't even seem to get agreement about the most basic of things, to appoint a set of commissioners. I am very reluctant that this would actually bog down and that we would find ourselves up against another deadline, and it would not serve our purposes. But, to go back on a positive note, do we need to do something? Absolutely. Could it be in the guise of a weather commission? Perhaps. I worry about the political process. I think it needs to be more tactical and less strategic. It needs to be faster, and it needs to tie to the highest agenda items, which I think are built around the weather-ready enterprise. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Kerry W. Ludke, Vice President and General Manager for Operational Space, Ball Aerospace and Technologies Corporation. Kerry?
Thank you. There is clearly a public expectation that the NOAA's forecast systems and infrastructure provide each and every one of us with the ability to prevent ourselves from losing lives and property. There's therefore an expectation that our infrastructure is robust. If we take a look back five decades, I think when we look carefully, we'll see, especially with respect to low Earth orbit remote sensing capability, we're now at a time where we haven't been for most of the past five decades, which is we're one launch vehicle failure away from not having infrastructure in low Earth orbit. What I'm concerned about relative to the commission is what I would call unintended consequences. If there appears to be vacillation in the need or an understanding of the requirements that we need to put together going forward, in the political process on the Hill today, the first thing that the budgetary guys will do is zero that out until you figure out what you are going to do and what you are going to deploy. On the ground, we have infrastructure that's aging, buoys, algorithm development. The National Weather Service needs the funding to be able to get the forecast out. So, again, I'm worried about the unintended consequences of a weather commission and another voice. And by the way, there's already a number of advisory committees and groups that have produced reports. Those reports are there to advise on the path forward. Perhaps the weather commission's best path is to focus the nation's decision-makers on the fragility of our current weather enterprise and ensure that we have funding to put in place the plans we have today. Thanks.
And finally, Mr. Bob Ryan, meteorologist for WJLA, ABC affiliate, in Washington, D.C.
Thank you. Thank you, Jon. I think as we think about moving forward, it is helpful to reflect on history, too. And when I first heard of this, I was thinking, "Why do we need another weather commission?" We have a weather commission. And the history is that myself and Ray were fortunate to be part of the Fair Weather Report, which some in this room may remember, the NRC report 2003, and then the follow-up a number of years later on completing the forecast. And in the history going back, we were not quite as an enterprise, all pulling in the same direction. And the purpose and the initiation of the so-called Fair Weather Report subtitled Effective Partnerships in Weather and Climate was to try and bridge those divides that we found ourselves in as three communities, if you will, the three sectors that all are part and integral part of our common goals, the academic, the public, and the private sector. And one of the recommendations of that led to the formation of the AMS Commission on Weather and Climate Enterprise, for which Jon and myself were part of the ad hoc committee. And congratulations to Jon for this year getting the Ken Spengler Award for that initiation of that commission, which has been indeed very, very effective. And the commission and the recommendation was set up as a, quote, "neutral host." So, it has been a very, very effective commission within the society, a neutral effective host of bringing and bridging those gaps. And I think for those of us who reflect 10 years ago of the community, and there was a diversity of opinion on the directions and how we best serve the public and serve the economy, I think we're probably pulling more together now than we were 10 to 15 years ago. So, why do we need a weather commission? Well, I think, as everyone has mentioned, given the current physical and economic reality that we find ourselves in as a country, and reflecting on where we are as a community that serves the economy, serves the country, and indeed, serves the public and serves the world, for anyone that thinks that going forward, that we will have an improved service of X plus Y million, I think we would all, or X plus Y billion in terms of the economic benefit, I think we would all agree to that. And for the total funding of our enterprise, anybody that believes in five or 10 years the total funding will be X plus Y million versus X minus Y million, I think, imagine a show of hands. We are living in a different world, and the deficits and the budget realities, we know we will not get everyone from the public and the academic sector to be as funded as we are even right now. How do we do that? And how do we represent? And how do we, in a short time, these things are looming there almost daily now. We know that the sword of Damocles almost is hanging over us in the budgetary realities that we face. So, how do we do that in a short time? And I think that, indeed, that we need to have a clear message and be proactive and with a coordinated offense as we go into the playoffs, if you will. And so, perhaps, and I share Barry's some concerns, the commission, having a weather commission, a defined, very well-defined commission, that is the challenge. But, thinking about the benefits going forward and speaking with one voice, if you will, and having a commission that will hear these various disparate voices and yet, try to use the influence and use the congressional mandate, if you will, to lead us forward, I think has tremendous, tremendous benefit. We have a compelling story as a group, and we sometimes tell it as three or four or five or 10 different voices. But let me just close with the words from that famous, famous meteorologist. "We must all hang together, or assuredly, we shall all hang separately." Benjamin Franklin. I think we have to think about that going forward, and we must do it in a short time.
Thank you, Bob. I will also note that Franklin commented, "There is nothing so much as the touch of hemp around the neck to focus one's mind." All right, we will now open the floor to questions and comments. I will ask people to come up to the microphone here at the center of the room, and please speak into the microphone, because, as we said, we are recording this. There are a number of people who wanted to attend but couldn't for other reasons, so we want to be sure that they hear. So, the floor is now open for questions and comments. I cannot believe that a group of meteorologists don't have a question or a comment. I cannot believe that a group of meteorologists don't have a question or a comment. Cliff, you're sitting right there next to the microphone. That's the quietest I've ever seen you.[604.04][604.04](LAUGHING). Well, Barry, and let me start off here. I'll ask you a question. What sort of initiative would you see? I mean, what type of vehicle would be necessary to do what you said if we, other than a
I think the, first of all, I think the concern that I have about the commission to begin with is the current overly blank sheet of paper. And I would rather start with where I think the greatest need and where there's political support, and that is around this theme of a weather-ready nation, that it would be very focused on how do we get the country better prepared for all weather. So I think that that is the number one thing that I would go in would be to try to narrow the focus down on what I believe is an actionable agenda. Secondly, I am a little concerned about the process historically of a commission of essentially congressionally appointed, and I'm worried in this day, in these political times, whether that is a constructive route. I think I could be convinced that it might be, but I would like to see narrower in focus and a short delivery cycle.
Thank you. And we have some brave questioners that have come forward. I forgot to mention, please state your name for the record.
Okay, thanks, John. Dave Jones with Storm Center Communications and new fellow.[715.23][715.23](LAUGHING). I just, my question is, it's sort of voicing a sense of frustration with why NOAA's budget keeps getting cut when they're an operational agency and organization out there to protect lives and property? And does this, is this new commission, is the idea to provide a sense of urgency for the private sector to voice things that the government cannot voice about the urgency of funding being maintained? Because, you know, when you cut the government across the board, you can't do it with a hatchet. You've got to do it strategically. And to cut money away from agencies that are so critical is mind-boggling to me. So is the idea of the commission on weather policy to get out there and tell Congress the importance of weather and climate and all of these impacts that are happening so these agencies can maintain a good budget level, something that's realistic, so money doesn't have to be swapped to keep paying employees? You know, do we, I don't want to ramble on, so I'll stop, but is the idea for us to sort of come to a kumbaya moment to say, we're all going to fight for NOAA and operational agencies? Is that what this is about?
Anyone want to address that?
I'll say something, but I think we ought to hear from the private sector, and that is that I think that this is not an either war. And I think that the unique strength of the American weather enterprise right now is the private sector, federal, academic partnership that does exist. What I think that the concern is, is that that partnership is not as strong for a variety of reasons. Observational capabilities have fallen by the wayside. We've been talking about next gen until there be another next gen. That we really, we have a bit of a rust belt problem. And that therefore the American weather readiness is not increasing. And that lack of weather readiness is shown up in all of the problems that we've seen. And we have to somehow maneuver the country using the private sector, federal university partnership in a way that is strategically realizable and more weather-ready. And this has to be done on a much faster timescale than I think one normally historically thinks of with respective commissions. That's my biggest concern.
I think we have the, from the private sector, we have to make sure that the body enterprise, the skeleton, the bone structure is as strong as it can possibly be and maybe even gets stronger. We also have to recognize the strengths and the way communication, decision-making, as we have seen in these perfect examples of Sandy and others, has moved forward. And the responsibilities of our shared goals, our shared goals are to make the, have the public best served by this wonderful, wonderful enterprise worldwide, nationally, locally, so that they make the best decisions. And I think we have a compelling story to tell going forward and yet by the same token, recognizing that in the realities of the world that we now face, can we, as an enterprise, give the taxpayers more bang for their buck? Can we operate more efficiently, recognizing that NOAA funding, EPA funding, FAA funding, is there any duplication? Is the basic bone, the basic skeleton there strong? How can we recognize that we're entering a different world? How can we maintain that strength? And yet by the same time, say, you know what? We are going to do it more efficiently. We are going to recognize, we have to save funds, we have to be more efficient going into the future. And the combination of the fiscal realities that we face short time, plus the impacts that we've seen of our weather, of the weather, and yet not necessarily the best decisions made with the best forecast, may offer a compelling story and a unique opportunity to enter the world that we know is out there and with the full support of the decision makers. And again, I don't think when we're going before the judge and the physical authorities that will make those decisions, we want to do it separately or else we'll all be taken out and be cut. But I think, again, a mechanism, and I don't know whether the commission is, so that we can be speaking with one voice and saying, we recognize the world and we can do it a lot more efficiently perhaps going forward and save the taxpayers the dollars and take the initiative rather than waiting for somebody else to come to us and say, guess what? Here's how much dollars you got. The skeleton, though, is critical. I think that we maintain that.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Let's go on to the next question. Next question, please.
My name is Brandon Daly. I'm a recent graduate from Florida State University. And I have a, now a two-part question since part of one has already been answered. Number one, how do we, as a community, get the public backing in an age where most of the public is already tired of government bureaucracy and ever-expanding government? And how do we convince them that a quote "another" government agency or organization is going to help become more weather-ready as a nation? And how do we convince the public that this is necessary in a time of where most of the public is thinking, well, it hasn't happened to me yet, so how does it affect me?
I'll just jump in, but I want others to. I don't think the body politic is frustrated with the National Weather Service.
Not the Weather Service.
No, but I, I don't think they're frustrated with the National Weather Service. And so what I, I guess what I'm trying to argue for is to somehow narrow the perspective around the topic of severe weather and make sure that that includes droughts and ice storms and so forth. And that we look at what are the needs and the synergy between the National Weather Service, AccuWeather, Earth Networks, et cetera, and the university community in making the, you know, taking as a real task that we're going to get done, not in the next three or four years, but we're going to start making progress with milestones in the next six months. That's my biggest concern is that a commission will sound like, well, this is just another big governmental thing, as opposed to something that's more like a stiletto, if you will.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's go on to the next one.
Pierce Sellers, NASA. I think we're actually arguing from a position of strength that the whole business of weather prediction actually has high credibility in the U.S. right now, tornadoes in 2011 and the hurricanes and extreme weather more recently. You know, everyone's done a really good job and the public's benefited and seen it. So I'm wondering why at this point do we want to throw our fate into the hands of a large machine that we can't control and we don't know where it's going to go, whereas we have two fabulous professional societies, AMS and AGU, who could probably put together quite a good set of arguments for what needs to be done in the future anyway? Were the people, I mean, I'm looking around the room, were the people who know our trade, aren't we in the best position to set the priorities and argue what needs to be done?
Question.
Just a thought surrounding that, because I think it's an excellent point. Having spent as much time and effort as I and other people have, one thing that is very apparent is that we have many, many common goals within the enterprise and that we never seem to be able to come together to express them. And the concern that I have is, are we just trying to punt now to some other organization or group to try to do that for us, over which we have no control and could come out with anything? You know, dissolve the National Weather Service, move it to the Department of the Interior. What is the most horrible thing you can?
By the way, you're saying it much better than I did. Thank you. Keep going.
What is the most horrible thing you can think of? Because once you lay it on the table for people who have been politically appointed, which is most likely where this will go, and there's been a process used in some of these in the past, you know, that people in the House get to appoint some and people in the Senate get to appoint some, and it's based on party and so forth, this is a political process. We don't know who would be appointed. And it may be no one in this room. So wouldn't it be easier if we could just all have a kumbaya moment here in this room today and figure out how, with the power that we really have, to get off the dime, focus on some of the concerns Barry and has, I have, and so forth? We've got critical issues today.
We've been fighting those battles, though, as, and it hasn't, you know, the cliff is there. We're not, we're no longer heading down a little slope. This is, this is critical. And I don't think as effective as the AMS and the AGU may be as voices, we're not going to have business as usual in the next few years with the realities that we have. And if we don't have a mechanism that has perhaps the, some authority mandated by Congress to reshape the world that we have, reshape the enterprise, maybe it's time. And the public, the general public certainly knows that they get their dollars' worth, but there's nobody on the Hill lobbying for the general public.
And I thought everybody up there was lobbying for the general public.
Oh, yeah. We have a wonderful story of the value and how they are certainly getting their money's worth. But as was just, we can also have a wonderful story. We can do it more efficiently. We can't?
We can.
What's the back, yeah, and I don't, I don't know that the mechanisms that we have, the structures that we have now and business as usual and hoping for the best in the next few years is necessarily the best way to do it.
And with that, let's go on to Cliff Mas. Go ahead, Cliff, introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Cliff Mas from the University of Washington. I guess what I wonder is whether we are putting the cart before the horse here. I mean, we have a real infrastructure problem in our field. NOAA and the National Weather Service are in deep trouble, computational resources, satellites, on and on. We have really serious infrastructure problems that we have not dealt with as a community. The community has not worked well together. We have really no good way of organizing ourselves and prioritization. Research to operations is not going well. We have really severe problems. On the other hand, we have tremendous strengths. I mean, we are on every TV news broadcast, you know. Sandy is a, as bad as it was, is a phenomenal opportunity because we are out there now. They know about us, they know about our problems. So for me, we've got to do something here. But I really agree with Barry's, as we have to do something concrete. We have to define what do we want the organization to do first. And once we define that, then we can talk about whether the commission is the way to do it. But we've really got to think through what we need to bring our community together first.
Okay, I'll take that as a comment and go on to Joel Myers.
Hi, Joel Myers, founder and president, AccuWeather. I agree with a lot of what Pierce said, so, and what Barry said, but I don't want to hang at all separately or with all of you, the rest of you. So the fact is that we do have a compelling story and I think a lot of it gets told and we've worked together to get extra funding, the private sector backing the computers and so on. And we can do that in a better way, undoubtedly, but we have the power to do that. Too many times in society today, we turn over the responsibility to others. If we, we should be able to figure that out. We've got a lot of talent and expertise and together, and we've proven that with some of the AMS commissions. And believe me, a lot of the strengths that you're talking about, Bob, about what we accomplished, does get out there into stories and so on. Remember, there's a thousand other agencies and operations within the federal government or people trying to get money that all believe that they have just as critical a value and a compelling need as the meteorological community. And they're all going to be making that case. And you're quite right, the, there's no turning back. I mean, the fiscal, the $16 trillion debt which continues to escalate is going to put pressure on for many, many years. And so it's a new reality and, but we can't change that reality. And commissions or whatever aren't going to change it. That's a reality and we have to ourselves decide what the compelling story is and all work from the same page in the hymn book. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take that as a comment. Next?
Mary Glakken, retired NOAA. I just want to, I guess, make a couple of comments also. One is, I think Barry started us out really nicely in saying, what problem are we trying to solve and then are we using the right tools to solve it? And I think the discussion has been really good in that regard, that we do share a lot in common. And I think the presidential forum this morning did a nice job of really highlighting how our future is very different from our past. And it's personally hard for me to wrap my mind around that and looking at some of the current structures that we have today. So the second comment, and I guess my major comment here is, I just want to remind people that when you're in the public sector, the ability of the public sector to change and adapt and to evolve is much different than the private sector. You can have the best plan in the world and if it doesn't work with the political process, it's not going anywhere. So I don't know that a commission is the right solution for what we have right now, but a commission does have the attribute of engaging the political process that an agency like NOAA needs, you know, to be able to do anything that is significant change in any regard. So I think that there should be, you know, further discussion on what problem we're trying to solve and then a real analysis of what are the appropriate tools and mechanisms. I was really appreciative of Bob Ryan's comments. I think there's a lot that this society can do through the Weather and Climate Commission that we have. And there are other mechanisms as well that are there. And I think we're in a really positive place right now in terms of relationships among the sectors to take those on. So I welcome the discussion, the continued discussion on this.
And again, I'll take that as a comment and we'll go on to the next question.
My name is Paul Hayes from the Naval Postgraduate School. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like one of the roles of this commission would be to prioritize the needs of the overall weather community to Congress, especially in times of shrinking budgets. But with a body that addresses the needs of at least three competing bodies, conflict is absolutely inevitable. So the question that needs to be asked is, how would this commission manage this conflict in order to best prioritize funding for our community?
Let me just comment. I think the most recent well-known commission, a little bit different from what is being thought about here, would be Simpson-Boltz. thought about here, would be Simpson-Boltz. And there, of course, it was kind of an in-house commission, you might say, versus, I won't go there. So I think that this is at the very nub of the question, is that is a political-appointed, independent commission the best avenue for urgent political action? Or are there alternative approaches for urgent political action? Because I really think, as Karen Lutke said, we are one launch failure away from not having a situation in low Earth orbit. We have never been in this situation. You look, for 50 years, we've been flying DMSPs and PoZ satellites, and we always had one in the barn, and we had four orbits. So now we're in the process of signing the mid-morning orbit over the Europeans. We don't know what the Air Force is going to do in the early morning, and we've got an afternoon with nothing in reserve, and we don't have one in the barn. So we really have gotten ourselves into a pickle with respect to our satellites. Look at the radar systems. Are we going to have a dual-polarized system in the future that will be a joint FAA, NOAA? Well, I don't know. They'll kick that ball down the street. So I really think that urgency has to be, and I think there's an agreement there. I think it's a political analysis of what's the best way for which urgent political action in these tough times can be taken.
But by starting this process as we have right now, we are taking the initiative--
Yes.
--rather than waiting for an appropriations committee to say, "Guess what? Your budget's cut 30 percent." So I think, you know, having this as a first step and thinking about it and formulating, as Ray says, "Send any ideas. What should be the structure? What should be the..." We can then be in the, taking the initiative rather than being reactive to what we know is coming down the road. I think it gives us an opportunity.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to have to call it there. We want to have a brief summary from Pam Imp, and so I would encourage Fred and James. Quick.
I know it was before or after. We're done?
You were done. I would encourage all of you who have questions or comments, who have made comments, to please put them on the website for others to see. We'll certainly have the audio available, but we're also trying to communicate to as wide a possible audience of the discussion that's going on here, and also capture, I'm sorry if we had to cut off here, get your thoughts out there as well. And the website is an interactive one, where you can not only post your ideas, you can comment on the ideas of others as well. So Pam, the last five minutes.
Right. So in summary, we've heard many good comments here. We, I think, you know, I was making some notes about some common comments that were made across all the diverse opinions. We all agree we have a compelling story, we have some common goals. We recognize that within the community, for example, within the AMS community, we've had opportunities over the last several years to come together and have internal communication within the public, private, and academic sectors to discuss our various goals, to have good collaboration. What we're talking about to some extent now is an external focus. So how to, what kind of effective vehicle we can start up to improve the profile of the weather enterprise to the public, to the White House, to Congress? How do we do that effectively? How do we focus it? What's the most effective way to focus it? A weather commission is such a vehicle, potentially, but there's a lot of discussion that we would like to have about this. So our goal is to continue the dialogue. We've got opportunities to do this. We're, essentially, we're still at the starting point here, but we do have the initiative. So it's our opportunity to take the initiative, to be proactive. For you to feed in your comments, we have the Weather Coalition website. We're collecting comments there. Please read those, please provide your comments. It's www weathercoalition.org. We also have the meeting coming up in Dallas, March 6th and 7th. There are a couple of AMS meetings coming up, we'll have continued discussion there. The AMS Washington Forum is coming up the first week of April in Washington, D.C., and also the AMS Summer Community Meeting. So it's an opportunity for all of us, again, to be proactive, take the initiative, get the comments in, hone this idea. Should this be more strategical, more strategic, more tactical? How do we balance those things? How do we balance all of our goals and actually raise the profile of the weather enterprise to the benefit of the nation? Thank you all very much for attending, and thank you very much to our panelists.